Good morning. It's Tuesday, September 24th, 9:30 a.m. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we've got minutes?
Moved to approve the minutes of the September 17th Commissioner meeting.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion or changes? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. And now open up for public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed. We've got our resolutions. Dan Becker with the County Engineers Office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've got four resolutions for your consideration today. The first is authorizing the final change order for the Lake Road Concrete Replacement Project. The second is the necessity to close Breimer Road for some kind of project. Third is approving the final change order for the pavement marking project with JD Striping and Services, Inc. And the fourth is approving the final change order for the 2024 Township Pavement Marking Project. And then our weekly permits.
Moved to approve the four resolutions?
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Next, Jeremy Senko, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Three resolutions for consideration this morning. The first is authorizing the transfer of funds between various sanitary engineer funds. The second is authorizing the sanitary engineering department to purchase automated traffic signals and trailer. And the third is authorizing the President of the Board of County Commissioners to submit applications and execute contracts to the Ohio Public Works Commission for Issue One Funding.
Moved to approve three resolutions?
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Denise Testa, our Planning Services Director. Good morning.
Good morning. I have three resolutions for your consideration. The first being approving an amendment to the Kleinfelder Contract for PY-23 Community Housing Impact Preservation Program. The second being authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to execute the State of Ohio Development Block Grant Program Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Administration Agreement. That's a mouthful. Authorizing Change Order Number One to the agreement with the Specialized Construction Incorporated for the City of Brunswick, CDBG, project. And that actually came in under budget.
Good.
Moved to approve the three resolutions?
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion?
That Kleinfelder, when that's being decreased, is that what I saw?
Correct. So they have agreed to pay for our public, for the advertisements in the Gazette as part of their admin funds, so rather going to Kleinfelder, it's paying for the ads.
Gotcha. Great.
They agreed to do that, kind of last minute for me.
All right, good. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Very good.
Have a good day.
Thank you. You too.
Holly Murin, our Human Resources Director. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personnel changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one in sanitary, one in transit, seven rate increases, two at county home, one in transit, one at Job and Family Services, and three in sanitary, one leave of absence in finance, and one resignation at Job and Family Services.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Brett Thomas, our Finance Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the finance show, because we have 15 resolutions today for you. We will begin with the increases of appropriations. The larger ones of note here are actually for sanitary, for the sewer construction and water construction. Our second resolution is for transfer of appropriations. There are a couple to note here. Again, we have an increase in assigned council fees. We'll be covering a little bit of that with a grant later on. And also, I wanted to note our changes to Board of Elections budgets. When we had originally started off the year, we had a lot of variables going on with Board of Elections for the costs of different items, and so we had given them a preliminary budget that had encompassed their, what they needed for the primary elections. And so this will cover the remainder of their budgetary year, hopefully.
They already have a lot of absentee ballot requests, so they're working hard.
Yeah, and that has changed considerably up to a much larger ballot. So unfortunately, not much we could do about that one. Our third resolution is expenditure adjustments for various funds. This is mostly just moving things around for various, out of the general fund for expenses and into grants where we could. Our fourth resolution is a cash transfer for the Office of Older Adults Healthy Aging Grant. Our fifth resolution is cash transfers for various other funds. For this one, most of, most everything on here is just moving cash around as needed for different grants, as old grants have closed and new grants are opened up. Our sixth resolution is the creation of Safe Communities Selective Traffic Enforcement Program that is in the amount of $46,341.60. Our seventh resolution is another portion of the Safe Communities Grant for the Impaired Driving Enforcement Program. That's $43,841.60. Our eighth resolution is for adult probation for the State Crisis Intervention Program. It's for $90,300, and this is actually money that the state has granted us that should aid in some of our indigent defense costs. So that's a pretty exciting grant for us. Our ninth resolution is the creation of the Juvenile Court Special Docket Medication and Assisted Treatment Fiscal Year 25 grant in the amount of $2,544. Our 10th resolution is creation of a Drug Task Force Recovery Ohio Grant Fund for $10,000. 11th resolution is for an agreement for Family First Council for an intake, referral, and service coordinator between Family First and Catholic Charities of Medina County, not to exceed $280,000. Our 12th resolution is for an agreement for the service coordinator between Family First Council and Medina County Board of Developmental Disabilities for a total of $55,000. Our 13th resolution is expenses for travel for the county engineer for the Ohio Transportation Engineering Conference in Columbus. Our 14th resolution is expenses for other county officials. We have Juvenile Detention Center sending somebody for Beginning Guide to Grant Writing Seminar here in Medina. And finally, we come to our weekly bills in the amount of $1,315,638.57.
Moved to approve 15 resolutions?
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion?
You'd mentioned about the Board of Elections transfer. I was in communication with them yesterday, too, and we believe that'll cover the costs with the uptake.
Correct.
And if there weren't, though, I think you'd even mentioned in an email that if we needed to address that further, we'd be able to do that.
Correct. Because we have additional routes that we can take if we need to.
And I think just, I think all three of us remember this, but when we did that funding, we kind of took a wait-and-see approach, because a lot of the projections were based on the biggest-ever election year ever in history, ever. And it probably, it's shaping up to be that, but we didn't necessarily want to fund on those assumptions until we saw that the numbers come in. We went to see how the primary, how things went through the primary and everything else. So I think this is all kind of part of that, and we're on the right track where we thought we would be.
When we had started off, the assumption, the figures that the Board had to provide us during the budget season were to essentially fund everybody voting in every manner possible, which is absolutely not the case. But we don't know at any point in time whether we're going to have how many people voting absentee, how many people are going to show up for early voting. All of those things affect their staffing ratios as well as additional costs, so.
And some of those are just wait-and-see numbers.
Yep.
Just as the Secretary of State at that point had not issued his directives for the general election, and that was only like two months ago, that he finally came out with a more comprehensive. And till then, you really don't know the administrative costs until you start looking at his directives.
It's good to get the transfer done before fourth quarter, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep.
That's good.
Thank you.
All right, roll call.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Super, very good. Thanks, Brett. Matt Springer, our County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have three resolutions. The first one is declaring Medina County Motor Vehicles as excess property and to sell at public auction. The four vehicles, one of them is from the Sheriff's Office, two is from Drug Task Force, and the third is from the Veteran Services Department. The second resolution is the allowing for the salvage and disposal of vehicles from the Sheriff's Department. This is a 2020 Ford Explorer. It's been deemed irreparable, so we have salvaged parts from it at this point. It no longer has any purpose. And then the third and final is approving the transfer of two vehicles from the Drug Task Force to the Sheriff's Office for other uses at some point in the future.
Moved to approve the three resolutions?
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Very good, thanks.
Now for department updates. Shannon Ryan, our Transit Director.
Good morning. Morning, how are you?
Good, good.
So to report on August of this year, we had another strong year. Our ridership continued to increase. It was exceeding the average for year-to-date, or actually August 23, and our monthly average. So ridership has continued to increase. We're feeling it on a daily basis, more requests for more service. We're meeting that need. In some cases, we did have 43 trip denials, which is 43 too many, but keeping that under control a little bit better. The team's working hard to find the most suspicious way, the most efficient way actually to find people trips where they're going. Costs continue to be kept down by the, you know, reduction in fuel costs, reduction in miles. Revenue miles are down, which is really helping us to be more efficient across the board. Our cost per passenger, you know, $34.84 is well below what it was last year at this time. So we're happy to see that. I think we're going to continue to get more, more efficient with better software upgrades that we have coming, upgrading our map, which is important to the scheduling process. So we feel like we can even get better, but right now, it's going okay. The contracts that we have, we're continuing to meet monthly, going to a lot of events at the senior centers. We have, we had one this last Friday that Amy Carpenter, Operations Supervisor, went to. Very helpful to office for adults. I have another one coming up in October at the Suprema Center. So we're making sure we keep contact with our contract services and supporting those events that they have, which is nice for us to hear the feedback. There is a couple things to mention. We were participating in a WACA study for seniors across the five-county region. It is becoming quite involved in then capturing data and feedback. I went to a public meeting that they had at the Suprema Center and got some good feedback from the WACA. They're continuing to draw data from us. I think it's a lot about the 5310 grant, the Section 5310 grant that is available every year through the FTA, and the WACA is going after those dollars, and we're part of that process, so we're supporting that as well. Good news on the hiring front. About three months ago, we decided to put actually physical signs on our buses, hiring drivers on every bus, and it's helped. We have just about ready to fill. We have three people in the pipeline. Of course, this takes a little bit to get people hired, but we're seeing some people come to work, more people interested in driving through those sign-ins. So nice to have the drivers. It really does help support us on a daily basis where we have some options that we haven't had in the last year or so. So staffing is going better. We do have an office staff position available. We made an offer and waiting on that to come back, too. So filling the positions that we need have been very helpful in us meeting the goals, so.
Great.
I did have one other mention. We're in preliminary talks with Greater Cleveland RTA about some exchanging of funds that we've done. It's a little bit of a different agreement, because we're not urban any longer. But with the help of ODOT, I made some contacts with ODOT to gain their support. And not to get too long-winded, but because we run service in Brunswick, which is part of the Cleveland urban area, we're providing that service, they, Cleveland themselves, need to support us in some way financially. So we're doing the quote-unquote "the math" to figure out how much that means. I'm not quite sure what it means, but we are providing that service, and we, I communicate, we're going to continue to provide that service. So we could be pulling some dollars from Cleveland because of that support of Brunswick in that urban area. So nice to see that we have an option, maybe.
Yeah.
More to come.
So is that something that could increase in the future with more service in Brunswick, too?
It could. It's based on an urban formula for ridership and population. As Brunswick continues to grow, yes.
It's population-based, not, not travel? Yeah, ridership-based, gotcha.
There is part of the formula. There's about four or five parts of that formula. I think it's probably going to lean more towards that we provide the flex service, because we broaden that whole area. We wrapped our arms around that whole area rather than just parts of it. That shows that we're providing more of an urban presence there.
Gotcha.
In Brunswick. So, but, good question. I don't have the math in front of me. Cleveland and I are trying to agree on the math.
It's still hard to believe we went back to rural.
Blame the census.
That's the only people that will take credit, and you can't call them.
Yeah. I did want to make a comment. I know you talked about the denial, well, obviously, we try to reduce that.
Right.
But if you look at the 2023 year-to-date average, trip denial was 47. Now we're down, our year-to-date is 19. So our denials are going down. We're doing far more rides, and our cost per passenger is going down. So for basically about the same money, we're actually being much more efficient and fewer denials, which is, I think, astounding. And I agree that we should try to reduce those as much as possible, but you are accomplishing that. Thank you.
I think we can get better. I think we can get it to zero again, but I think the trips, and I mentioned this before, a lot of these trips that we're denying are outskirts.
Right.
Farther out.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Not in town, farther out.
Understand.
Okay.
But great job.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Debbie Kiley, Job and Family Services.
Good rainy morning. First, four resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first is authorizing a contract with the Children's Center and Job and Family Services for child visits at the center. The next is authorizing an MOU between Job and Family Services and Alternative Paths. The next is authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Job and Family Services and the Summit and Medina Workforce Council of Governments. And the last one is authorizing an agreement for Job Development Services with Tri-County Jobs for Ohio graduates.
Moved to approve the four resolutions?
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Two quick updates. As we all know, credit card skimming is a common topic, and unfortunately, our SNAP recipients are quickly becoming targets of that. Each month, the agency receives a report from the state that notes suspicious activity. Maybe it's a retailer that has some suspicious activity or suspicious activity on the card, like $1 transactions, 50 cent transactions, things that don't make sense, like you might see coming in and out of your bank where somebody's trying to test that card to make sure that they could go in and take all the benefits. So typically, those reports have one or two cards on Medina County's list. So it's still one too many, but it's not a ton. However, this month, we received and noticed that there were 10 cards that were impacted. So it immediately made us raise our eyebrows and say, uh-oh, what's happening here? So our fraud investigator immediately started pulling reports to determine commonalities. How many days, what days, what times, what dollar amounts, and what store. After she did all of that, she found out there was one store that had seven of those cards compromised. So she immediately called the police. The police came and found a skimming device on the card reader at that store. So the police were investigating, but I just, I applaud her efforts for seeing that, notifying, looking at those transactions, calling the police, because if that card obviously doesn't get removed, then so many people, so many more people are impacted. So I have sent, previously last year, there's a mobile app that exists. It's called Connect EBT, and any individual that's receiving SNAP benefits can download that on their phone, and it allows them to change their PIN. They can check their balance. It's just like you would for your credit card. It also has a lock feature. So in between transactions, they can go in and say, I'm done using my card, no one else can use it. It's tedious, of course, but if they can continue to lock their card between those transactions, no transactions can happen outside of when they say yes or no. So I've submitted that to Brian, so he can include it in your newsletter. It was in, I think, July of last year, but now it's just like, we need to make sure that we're letting this known. So if somebody doesn't use that mobile app, either they don't have a cell phone or they don't want to use that mobile app, there's no other way for them to use that lock feature. It's only available in the app, but what they can do is change their PIN and do it a lot. Maybe once a week, maybe every two weeks. So it's of a tedious nature, but it certainly prevents you from getting your benefits lost.
The credit card machine that was skimming, that could also have been skimming anybody else that's not using a SNAP. So actually, other consumers could have been affected by that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep, you got it. So a small crisis averted, but it's not going to be the last one, unfortunately.
Yeah.
And more positive news, in Child Protective, our 24 and 24 campaign continues. We are at 18 families. Last month, I reported 17, so we've got one more. The team is continuing some pretty tireless efforts marketing their foster opportunities, and part of that effort was just released yesterday. It's a podcast. So they worked with media specialists who hosted the podcast. He did the interviews, and he interviewed four current foster families. Our foster family recruiter, who is also one of our foster families, and she, he also interviewed her 17-year-old son to get his perspective on being a foster brother. He's, that family started fostering when he was just 10 years old. He's 17 now. So it was a profound perspective of a youth who's experienced foster care but hasn't been the one in foster. There's so many myths that, and unknowns that exist when becoming a foster family. So the team has done an excellent job trying to address those myths and those unknowns in answering those questions. What does it look like to foster? What does it look like for my family to foster? And this podcast does an excellent job of helping the community answer those questions. The videos, I call them snackable content. They're only like 20 minutes long. I think there's five in total. They're an honest look at what it's like to foster in our community. I encourage you to visit it. It's all one word, fostermedinapodcast.com. So fostermedinapodcast.com. Have tissues, because it's, it's not, I mean, you're not crying a river, but it's moving for sure to hear what these families. And that 17-year-old kiddo did a great job about sharing his experience, being 10 years old and being asked to take another brother into your home. So those are my updates.
All right, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bob Alaskar, Educational Service Center Superintendent. You don't come here very often.
Glad to see you.
Yeah, thanks for inviting me. Thanks to Commissioner Harrison for inviting me, in case you want to follow along.
All right.
So Commissioner Harrison had asked to just give a, kind of a history, brief history on the sales tax that we have in Medina County that goes to fund the schools. I'll assume that Dr. Hambley, since he was a huge part of this, can correct me on anything that I did incorrectly, but I had to bring back. I'm a history teacher by trade, so I had to do my research there. So a little bit of history context, and then to talk about the sales tax itself. So in Ohio, the way that schools are funded was found on Constitutional 1991 with the Duvall decision. They finally kind of sort of corrected that with the Fair School Funding Plan, which more accurately assesses and gives funding for what it actually costs to educate a student. But we still have the overall reliance on property taxes in Ohio and how we're funding schools. Certainly, property owners don't like that. Schools don't necessarily like that either, because it's really hard to pass levies with, especially now. In 2007, the Commissioners, led by Dr. Hambley, and the schools formed a comprehensive effort to find another funding mechanism for schools. And it was, it's really important to note that it was to supplant and shift and not supplement school funding. So speaking from a school district, former school district superintendent perspective, I had to maintain two school buildings in a district of, it was only 700 students, but maintain 1950 and 1900 school building with a permanent improvement levy of $120,000 a year. Commissioners are probably well aware that that's nearly impossible to do that. Types of funding that schools have besides the state funding, any levies that they can do, and there's some derivatives of these, but there's the operating levy, which is you can use day-to-day expenses, salaries, textbooks, so on. Permanent improvement, which can only be used for upgrades that last more than five years, buses, buildings, technology upgrades. Bond levy, which some of our schools have used recently to fund construction of school building. Emergency levies, which are used to pay day-to-day expenses and have to generate a fixed dollar amount. And then the school district income tax used for operating expenses or permanent improvements. So back to the sales tax. In April of 2006, Dr. Hambley led the charge, based on my history researcher led the charge. They were able to form an alternative funding study panel for the goal of finding these funding sources and to shift away from real property taxes. In November of 2006, the school districts proposed to the Commissioners a half percent sales tax. And then the, in February 2007, the Community Improvement Board, which is still in existence today, which is how they, how the Commissioners get the information of how to distribute those funds, created an MOU with the schools and the county Commissioners, basically saying that if schools ever had the opportunity to do this funding on their own, to propose a sales tax on their own, which we don't, that they, that it would be taken off of the Commissioners' books, and the schools would handle that then. This was put on the ballot in May under Ohio Revised Code 5739026, and there was also an Attorney General's opinion that said that the Board of County Commissioners could use this to give schools the funding for permanent improvements use only. The Community Improvement Board that's in place is mandated by state law. It includes three members appointed by the largest municipality, no more than two from the same political party, and six appointed by the county Commissioners, and no more than three from the same political party. The distribution of the funds for the sales tax is based on student enrollment in the school district. So you'll see when we get to the actual funding that there's actually a few schools that just touch in Medina County, Norway and Ripman, they get very small shares, but all of the schools within Medina County is based on, Medina, Brunswick are going to get the lion's share of that based on student enrollment. And districts can choose, and some of our districts have done this, to not apply annually for the grant and bank that allocation, but they can't bank it for more than 10 years, otherwise it goes back into the pot to be distributed. But that gives them the opportunity to pay for a larger expense at one time. It's important to note for citizens in Medina County and those outside, that's the other benefit of this. It's not only just Medina County citizens paying for this, but those outside of Medina with a sales tax in use, helping fund the school districts, but prescription drugs, groceries, public utilities, gas, food stamps, all exempt from the sales tax for these purposes. And then I've included the three-year trend data. Thanks to Rhonda for providing that information and all the information there. So one of the benefits of the sales tax there is you can see, based on the past three years, that the revenue has grown $1 million each year. When you do a permanent improvement levy, which would be the other way schools are funding this, it doesn't grow. I was stuck with $120,000 in perpetuity until I did a replacement or a different type of levy as a school district superintendent. So the growth here is certainly significant for the school districts. You can see the amounts of the funding that each school districts have gotten each year there. And then I provided some examples of how they're using that, ranging from textbooks, computers, auditorium lights, school buses, vans. Some of them are paying for that for their bonds, stadium turf, furniture replacement, choir platforms, building access controls. There's a number of safety and security features. They're doing fire alarm upgrades, construction trade buildings, which JVS, our career center, utilized for that. So any number of things in there, but I can tell you that is, again, as a superintendent, to not have to worry about where am I going to find and shift this money, because as with any family, you have a budget, and you're stuck with what you have, and you can't spend more than that, and those schools understand that. To take this off of them was quite significant and continues to be. It is a 30-year levy, so coming from 2007, 30 years, we're midway through, give or take.
Thank you. That's a lot of information. And the data you have on the examples of what's used for, that's from the, what they submit to the Community Improvement Board?
So each year, yeah, the Treasurers for each school district will submit those. The Community Improvement Board meets to review those, make sure, one, that the allocations are accurate, but most importantly, make sure that they fit the permanent improvement plan. In the past couple of years, there's been a few questions that we go back to school districts and say, hey, can you explain this more? Typically, when we get that, it's, they know what it is, and they can tell us. But yeah, that's, they submit that each year.
Yep. Well, and the reason I wanted you to come in, and I appreciate you doing it, is a very helpful and also brief summary of the history of it. So I appreciate both of those things.
I've been on the other side, so I always appreciate grief.
But I, but I really do, I, you know, when we go through, I think it's quarterly and allocate these, our bills jump by a couple million dollars, whatever it is when we're doing that. And it's easy to kind of overlook that impact, but I know the schools, in a world where, you know, it's ever more difficult to pass levies, and also in a county where the burden from property taxes is a lot harder for people to just make ends meet, this is, I think, a really great consumption-based way of doing it and doing it in a county where we already still have among the lowest sales tax rates in the state. So very, just helpful exercise. I was a big fan of this. I wasn't, obviously, on the Board of Commissioners when it happened, but I was a big fan from a distance when it was happening. And I'm just glad to see kind of the results of it over the last few years, and that it continues to be a great benefit to our schools.
Now, if I could make a comment, first off, it was the school boards that actually led the effort. the effort. Commissioner Sharon Ray at the time and myself were the ones that supported it. We assisted as best we could, obviously tried to bring political leadership from the county level, since it is a county commissioner's sales tax, but it really was the school boards and, and I'll just say, the general community. It did not pass in every district, but we had such huge support across, and I think in the long term, if you look, it did keep up with inflation. It's the one, one aspect of that funding that kind of gets missed is property taxes don't really keep up with that, and you have to continually go back. Here, at least, it's kept up at that constant level. The other I would point out is when I was in the legislature during Darrell Kick, we did a bill that actually corrected an issue with this for Black River. Since Black River has no buildings within the county, there was, they were restricted in what they could use it. So, and since we're the only county in the state that actually has a sales tax for schools, it was, it was, I'll just say, it's something we had to explain in the General Assembly as we were going through why we were looking for that. The prosecutor at the time had over the years says, "No, you can only use it for permanent improvements within the county." And in this, we were able to get that exemption.
Did that mean?
Clarity in the bill.
The buses had to be parked in Medina County, too?
Well, no, yes, permanent improvement could also include a movable object, which is, that's what they were using for. But they had a wall. They came in, the superintendent came in and was saying, they had a wall, literally it was ready to fall down, and they needed to put money for it. It was just, and it's like, that was a clear example where, yes, they needed to put that money appropriately where it was needed, and the schools needed that flexibility.
It's almost extraordinary how successful the program is, that not one other county in the state has followed.
Yeah.
Well, if you look at the nature of the sales tax, every county has specific uses that can be for that, and everyone, that section, many of them are using it. And the best example is Kyoka County. They decided to invite, to use that money to invest into an athletic field for millionaires to play. And for that economic activity, we invested in our schools and our education.
Yep.
At the same time.
The only other thing I want to add to this, the timing of this was just coincidental based on your schedule, but the fact that there are several levies around the county that are on the ballot. I do think occasionally there is a misinterpretation of, oh, well, the schools get all that sales tax money. And to Bob's point, Dr. Alasko's point at the beginning, you know, most of the funding needs that you see, at least, you know, with the ones the school districts are pushing are for operating costs. Those are things that are separate and apart from what the sales tax funding does. So I think it's important to make that distinction, because while this is a great benefit that is available to our local school districts, those operating challenges still, and I think every school district with the exception of Cloverleaf are being addressed by property taxes. Cloverleaf, I think, has the income tax, but, so it is still a challenge in the county to get our schools properly funded, but this certainly helps on the permanent improvement side.
I still have the original documents of when we were publicizing this and campaigning and so forth, explaining to the people the purpose of the money, and also, at the time, the largest arguments were, well, the state will pay for education. Well, the state's never going to pay for all the expensive location. There will always be a local share. Doesn't matter what they do. It hasn't changed from Duoff and will never change. There will always be a local amount as to, and the question comes down to is, how do you want to pay for that local? And at this point, Medina County chose, well, part of it needs to be, ought to be the sales tax. It is distinct, it's separate, but you're always going to have other types of levies, too. There's no doubt that's going to occur, and that's just the nature of school funding in Ohio.
Yep. Probably always will be.
Indeed.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And on behalf of the schools, thank you for continuing this. We appreciate it, definitely.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner's Resolution. Resolution, reappointing a member to the Medina County Advisory Council on Aging and Disability. This was Colleen Conley hereby reappointed to the Advisory Board on Aging. Her term expiring September 30 of 2027.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. Appointing a member to the Medina County Revolving Loan Fund. This is, Chris Jacob is retired as county administrator, leaving the vacancy on the Revolving Loan Fund Committee. This appoints Matt Springer as our county administrator to, let me see, with the term ending September 30 of 2025.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.